All right, well, if everybody's ready, I'm Justin Maynard, I'm Clean Water Division Manager. Good morning, Council, by the way. I have Jeff Schnabel here with me to discuss our 2022 to 2027 Stormwater Capital Plan update. I believe Jeff has presented on this topic to you in the past, some of you at least, for previous plan updates. This will just be kind of a reiteration of some of that for, for some of you. For those of you who are unfamiliar, we'll, we'll go through our process and everything. So on the next slide, there's going to be a summary of, of what we'll be discussing in this presentation. We aren't requiring any action right now, there's, there's no need to adopt at this meeting or anything. This is, this is an informational presentation to give Council opportunity to ask questions about our process. Our goals with this are, like I stated, an overview of the new six-year capital plan. We'd like to give you a summary of, of what was accomplished in 2021. And then tie this into a longer-term planning horizon, looking 20 years ahead of, of now, or 20 years ahead of a 20-year plan adoption. So our agenda is going to be look over the basis for all of this. What permit requirements we have to meet? The county's policy and goals, regulatory requirements, and then go through that 2021 capital recap. The plan itself consists of project types, prioritization of those projects. We have a, a high-level schedule, and then we'll discuss some funding and grant topics as well as leveraging opportunities within the county. With that, I'll turn it over to Jeff for the next slide.
Great, thank, thank you, Justin, and good morning, Council, good morning, everyone. Jeff Schnabel, the Stormwater Infrastructure Manager for Clark County Public Works. Thanks for taking a few minutes to chat with us today about the stormwater capital planning process. So let me jump in first with just a quick, just a quick review of the things that are kind of driving our capital program and driving what we do in Clean Water Division in general. So we're basically covered by the Phase One Municipal Stormwater Permit. Its genesis is in the Federal Clean Water Act under EPA. EPA then delegates that authority down to the State Department of Ecology, and they issue, as you know, our stormwater permit on a five-year basis. So that regulates discharges that we make from our storm system to waters of the state. And our current permit is effective from August of 2019 out into summer of 2024. Permit compliance for that permit is led by the Clean Water Division. We are supported by a number of other divisions within Public Works, as well as other departments within the county to accomplish all of those numerous requirements and criteria that we need to meet under that program. I will point out, and just as a reminder, that compliance on this stuff is, is a big deal for us as the county. Not just because there's fines and, you know, lawsuits and things like that roaming about that could, could crop up if we don't do what we're needing to do, but really, these, these issues get to public health, water body health, quality of life issues that we have here in the county. So you're familiar probably with most of the overall program components, but you'll notice that stormwater capital projects are in that list of, of requirements and components that we deal with in Clean Water. Next slide, please. So a little bit more about the framework and the regulatory requirements that we work under for specifically the capital program. Our policy position on this as, at the county is to meet those municipal stormwater permit requirements. Goals within that, of course, we're going to want to protect enhanced streams, wetlands, minimizing stormwater impacts to our receiving waters. And whenever possible, we want to maximize the benefits of county-owned lands as we do these projects. Under the permit, we have multiple pieces of that that are touched on by the capital program, capital plan. We are required to have what's called a structural stormwater control program to prevent impacts to waters of the state. We also have some stormwater management planning requirements. And of course, maintenance and operations is a huge piece of what we do for existing systems. There's also something called underground injection control, which is, to you and me, a dry well, which is water that is injected into a well that goes back down to the ground instead of running off. And this is also regulated at the state level under a different set of rules, but we are obligated to address any of our county-owned dry wells that present a threat to the groundwater resource. So we do have a few projects that, that touch on that. And then, of course, Growth Management Act touches on stormwater as well as part of the capital facilities plan. Next slide, please. So as Justin said, we, we wanted to quickly give you a, a little bit of an overview of what we were up to in 2021. This was a, a pretty much focused on repairs and taking care of some problem facilities that we needed to get a handle on. As you heard Mark talk about earlier this morning, taking care of our existing assets is a, is a huge priority within the stormwater, as well as roads and all the other components of the county, so we take that very seriously. In 2021, we were, we constructed five repair projects. Largest one being the Whipple Creek Place Project, which is that little picture there on the upper right. This was a failing outfall and a failing system that was really causing some significant damage to downstream canyons, and, and we were able to get in there and restabilize that, rebuild it, and make it back into something that should work for another lengthy time period. A couple of other smaller ones, Patton Downs and Vista Woods, those are smaller facilities that had failing systems within them that we then replaced and upgraded. We also had one, Phase One of our Schreiber reforestation program project. That is the lower picture there, that was taken just a couple of days ago. We'll be planting about seven acres in the next couple of weeks out there on the East Fork Lewis River on some county property. And then next year, the second half of that, of that project takes place for another six or so acres. Same time, we, we had about six projects that were actively in design in addition to those that were constructed. Some of those are a little bit larger projects. Part of the reason that we were focused on repairs in 2021 is that we have some grant-funded projects that need to run through the, the, the design process, and we'll be building those in, in the next couple of years. So about $4 million worth of projects that were in design. And then we also have our ongoing planning processes, including in Kenny Creek, reforestation planning, and some catchment planning up in Milk Creek under the permit. One thing I will mention that I forgot to put on the slide is, we also, since it was kind of a low-cost capital year for us, we were also able to pay off early a loan that we had outstanding from way back in 2012, the American Reinvestment Recovery Act, to do a big project up in the Whipple Creek watershed. We saw some outstanding debt on that, we were able to pay that off early and save 50-odd thousand in, in interest, so that was kind of cool, we were able to do that with our, our excess this year, so that was, that was good. Oh, thank you, on the next slide. So now jumping into the 2022 to 27 plan. Very similar priorities this year to what most of you saw last year. As mentioned, capital repair projects, always a big priority, we've got a number of those in this upcoming plan. A few projects that are, or excuse me, one big project, that's underground injection control. And beyond that, water quality treatment is always a focus, and we're working primarily in the Lower Salmon Creek watershed, some of the heavily impacted tributaries down in that region. Also out in Whipple, yeah, in Whipple Creek, we've got some hydrology projects following on from work we did planning in that area a number of years ago. Ongoing programs we do, that's basically our planning efforts, reforestation, specific drainage basin studies, and then street sweeping is an ongoing effort as well, which I'll touch on a little bit more. Next slide, please. So this will look familiar to what you see when the, when the transportation improvement folks come and talk to you. So just a quick pie chart of the project types and the 10-year total. We've got a little over $10 million program for this six-year plan. You can see there, the, on the right, the water quality portion of projects tends to be the lion's share. Nearly half of what we're, what we're spending goes towards water quality projects. Also, a significant investment in flow control, which is the hydrology projects, and then stabilization habitat, those are some of the larger, larger dollar item projects. And then you can see it's filled out with some of those repair projects, reforestation, dry wells and other smaller pieces. Next, please. So just kind of a high-level schedule. You can see here where we're, we're showing some of the funds that were spent through 2021. In the orange, the blue is upcoming spending within the six-year plan. And then down at the bottom, we've got a little bit of additional street sweeping funds that come into this, and I'll say just a quick word on the street sweeping. We do provide about 1.4 million over the six-year period, about a quarter million a year, 400, or 240,000 or so towards street sweeping. We fund that out of our maintenance budget, not out of our capital budget. So when we talk about a 10.2 million-dollar capital plan, there's this additional one and a half million of sweeping that is on top of that 10.2 million over that 10-year period. But we don't, we don't fund it out of the capital plan, but we do get credit from ecology for doing street sweeping. They credit us back as part of our structural stormwater control program. So it's kind of a, a little add-on on the side. The only other thing I'll point out on the schedule is you'll notice it's kind of front-loaded towards 2022 and '03. That's partly because we, we do tend to add projects that crop up as far as repairs right at the front of the six-year period. So you'll see some of those that are repair projects, and it kind of lines out to the right, and as we get each year, we'll, we'll be backfilling in. All right, I think, next slide, thank you. Okay, so a little bit about funding. This is a, a quick pie chart, this is actually the 2021 pie chart from our Stormwater Management Program Plan. Typically, our adopted budget's going to be in the range of about $8 million, plus or minus. As Mark mentioned earlier, we are one of the enterprise funds at the county, so these monies are collected specifically to provide stormwater services for the county. You can see there that, that, you know, operations and maintenance is, is really the biggest share of this, and, and it's a continuously growing share of our, of our work and of our funding. The capital, the reason I bring this up, capital spending varies quite a bit from year to year, just depending on what the projects are that we're building, which ones are in construction. So it can be a higher or lower percentage, or this cut, this year, it was kind of lower-cost projects, so only about 12% of our budget went to capital. I would anticipate that's probably going to be closer to 20% in 2022, because we do have a little bit bigger slate of projects coming out. So, next slide, please. So we do try to leverage our dollars as much as we can, stretch those out. Part of that is by utilizing county lands and cooperating with other county entities for these projects. So we do, we do contribute and help with some legacy lands work purchases. We have our six-year target of 30 acres of reforestation on county properties. And then things like the Heritage Farm Headwaters Wetland Restoration, where we can leverage our stormwater requirements into doing things on county property that will help, you know, forward county plans without necessarily hitting the general fund or, or other funding sources. So that's kind of a nice thing. And then, of course, we always try to coordinate with the county road projects. So when CRPs are going through and being planned, we try to look for areas where we can leverage those, put in some catch-based retrofits and deal with some of our issues. At the same time, we get, we do get some benefit by, by bundling some of these projects. The big one that we've got coming in in 2022, you know, we've got the huge 99th Street, Northeast 99th Street project that'll be built next year. There is a component of that project that will help us to address, I think, about 10 of our outstanding dry wells that are, that are problematic. So we're going to kind of knock those both out together, and we get to roll it in with that, that much larger project. Next, please. So we also use grants a fair amount in our, in our programs and our projects. Historically, you know, the beginning of the, of the Clean Water Fund period was about the year 2000. From 2003 to 2019, plus or minus 20%, a little more than 20% of our, of our stormwater capital projects have been grant-funded. That is still true today. We are looking at about 1.7 million in grant funding for five of the projects that are currently in the, the 2022 to 2027 plan. So we're happy about that, we do like to continually apply for grants and try to keep that, that money stream coming. We will next year be submitting two proposals is the current plan in October 2022, for about another million dollars for two retrofit projects. One is a stream enhancement on Cougar Creek down in the Lower Salmon Creek, and one is for some water quality retrofits along a very heavily traveled area of Hazel Dell Ave. Next, please. Okay, so that's kind of the, the gist of the, of the six-year effort. But we did want to kind of swing back around and chat with you a little bit about the 20-year stormwater effort, capital planning effort that I think we introduced to you last year about this time. And, and we are still looking to pursue this as a, as a programmatic effort within Clean Water. And so essentially, we, we look at the, the 20-year planning horizon as a way to have long-term, kind of proactive planning, prioritize a, a number of projects, and create ourselves essentially a menu of different project types that we can then pull out to create the six-year plans, which are much more fluid in terms of short-term needs, requirements, repairs, things that we need to address right away. So we think that'll really help us and, and also help us in populating those six-year plans more completely when we have a full 20-year plan menu to kind of select from. Obviously, all the same operating principles will be in play that we use on our six-year efforts, but we also think that the 20-year effort will allow, it really allows us to, to get at that larger asset management element of county responsibility, including probably some additional collaborative activities that just don't happen on the short term, they're, they're much more longer-term development. We want to achieve measurable water quality improvements and protection out there. There's also a lot of deficiencies in certain areas that have been developed long ago, where we have drainage issues, flooding issues that we'd like to be able to address on kind of a more holistic basis. So some of those considerations are, we want to be strategic, we want to be adaptable, make sure that we're designing and managing our system in a way that is sustainable, so that we get the longest useful period out of these, out of these things. Population growth, climate issues, environmental justice, all of these things will be wrapped into the process of coming up with a 20-year plan and determining which types of projects we would like to do in the future. And then the last slide will be a couple of new programs that we think that are going to be pretty important as we go forward, and we want to look at those as kind of opportunity slash need going forward. But one of the things we'll do in our, in our 20-year planning horizon is look a little bit more closely at the conveyance system, as well as our aging infrastructure. So our conveyance system being the stormwater pipes primarily. We've got upwards of 400 miles of, of pipe. That's, some of it getting fairly old, it's getting up there, 1952 is about the oldest of our buried conveyance lines. We don't have a current method or, or means to inspect those lines. And so as they age, we are getting a little bit of a bump in, you know, kind of emergency repair type situations that we get into when things sort of start falling apart. And the only way we notice it is when the road sinks, that kind of stuff. And so it's, you know, it's, it's a, it's a safety issue, and it's a, you know, it's a, a thing we want to get ahead of in the future. But in 2019, 2020, we, we spent about three-quarters of a million dollars on those kinds of emergency repairs of our, of our systems. So it's not insignificant when you look at the total, you know, the total budget for the Clean Water Program when these things happen. So in theory, we'd like to get ahead of that. If you look at that little graphic there as well, not just the conveyance system, but all of our infrastructure, right? There's, you can see that in the 90s is when stormwater infrastructure really took off, and some of those regulations really started kicking in, and, and we had to manage these, these things a little bit more aggressively. But as we get to about 2024, we'll have about 100 of those facilities that are reaching the 30-year kind of lifespan. And then about every five years thereafter, we add another 200 of those facilities that we own. Now, they are built to last, and we do have a very robust maintenance program to try to get as much life out of them as possible. But it is almost for sure that we're going to see higher cost repairs and more replacement that will need to rule into our long-term planning as far as our asset management through that 20-year plan, and then building them in the six-year plans. So investing in pipe inspection, prioritizing some of the more proactive repairs that we can do, and then rolling those into our longer-term plans so that we can get, you know, what we need out of our system. So I think that's all we have for you, I don't think there's another slide. But if there are questions or comments, we'd be happy to entertain them.
Okay, thank you, are there questions or comments?
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
I wonder if I should be as concerned as I feel like I am that we are needing to beef up on our ability to inspect aging lines. That sounds like a big problem, and how is that going to be resolved? What is the state of the art as far as how inspections should be done? Tell us, talk to us about that if you would, please.
All right, we could probably tag-team this a little bit, Justin, if you want to start out, talk about what we've been looking at.
Yeah, so historically, what many places do is they, they go to these essentially contractors that have large vehicles that they haul around with them with big TVs in the back, and the guys sit there and, and pilot these little remote cars essentially through pipes and collect video of, of, of the lines. Technology's advanced quite a bit, and there are some products out there right now that we're actually exploring that don't require quite as much investment and a vehicle to cart them around. Things have gotten a little bit more compact. This is along the lines of drones over the last decade in terms of that technological advancement. But we're just getting to the point where these things, these systems are getting a bit more compact, and you can drop these things into the lines. I think they run a couple thousand feet, up to a couple thousand feet down, down these pipe systems, and collect video as they go. And that enables us in some way at least, to look at those assets, start rating them, assessing their condition, and prioritizing where that investment needs to go. And I think actually Mark Gassaway touched on this in mentioning maintenance of, of assets. And I thought that was a little bit coincidental that he brought that up in his presentation as well. I sat here and smiled, knowing that we were going to be talking about this. So we, we are exploring what investment's going to be required to get that, that program moving.
And these are purchases that are made by the county for the inspection of the lines. It's not a rental system.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
About how much, in many, many dollars would be needed?
Rough estimate for, for just, you know, getting that equipment. I think they quoted in the neighborhood of 50,000, which compared to a fleet vehicle, I think previous estimates of, of that capital cost were somewhere in the neighborhood of, what, 400, 500,000 dollars, Jeff?
Actually, even a little bit more, I think we were looking in the, you know, the 600,000 to 700,000 because of the need for the truck and then the, the large camera systems and all that stuff. So this is a, a significant advancement in the technology and a decrease in the potential cost. Yeah, as far as just the capital equipment to do the work, right?
Good to hear.
Yep.
Other comments, questions?
Right, Madam Chair, I have some comments and questions.
Go ahead, Counselor Mevji.
Thanks, Jeff and Justin, and I discussed this with you before, but I really don't have a clear way ahead still. So I heard you talk about a six-year plan and 20-year plan, collaborative efforts, cooperating with other entities. We had some prior discussion about stormwater approval of permits from municipalities when we were talking about Lackamas Lake and Camas. You know, we had an inter-local agreement that we were working on with the city of Camas, and then they, primarily for the watershed issues impacting Lackamas Round and Fallen Leaf Lakes. And they pulled away from entering into that agreement. You know, we have Vancouver Lake, we have watershed responsibilities with nutrient loading and oxygen depletion. And these are issues that we've known about for 20-plus years. And so what is our leverage? What is our role in the stormwater permits with our municipalities, our annexed areas? What role do we have? And how do we move that forward? I understand there's now a Clean Water or potential Clean Water Act suit against Camas. And, and I just recently learned that we were the subject of a consent decree. Although I sit on the Lower Colombian Fish Recovery Board and knew that the county was contributing about $500,000 a year, I never knew it was as a result of a Clean Water Act consent decree. And now that we've completed that payment, you know, a lot of that money came back to us through the Lower Colombian Fish Recovery Board projects, which is a good thing. But so I'm really concerned and wondering, how do, how do we sit around with those other cooperating and collaborative entities that you mentioned to make some further progress on our watershed issues resulting from stormwater that impact some of our large lake bodies?
Yeah, those are, those are all great questions, Counselor, do you want me to take a shot at that, Justin?
Yeah, you're, you're, I know you have a little bit more familiarity with at least Lackamas than I do.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to, happy to chat about that a little bit. And, and yeah, the Counselor and I have, had talked about this a little bit in the past, and we've been, you know, kind of interested in, in working with these other collaborative partners as they work on the lake issues. I, I will say, this goes a little bit outside of just specifically capital. A lot of our collaborative work with some of these activities doesn't specifically result in capital projects, at least not at this stage. Possibly later on, we could see some activities in Lackamas that would be specific to lake actions. What we're doing as far as those existing projects that the city is doing, they have, they've hired some consultants to come in and study lake issues and, and come up with some plans. We're collaborating with them on that, providing a little bit of our data that we're collecting up in the watershed through our monitoring programs. And then what I think we'll see as, you know, as ecology and as the city begin to formulate more proactive plans to manage those water bodies that are down there, what I'd like to see is the county shifting some of our capital resources into those areas to do, again, you know, the most bang for the buck that we can get. Now, we do also, we already.
Just to interrupt a second, because I want to give you some ideas for capital projects. We're trying, you know, infusion of oxygen, repair of biofilters, repair or restoration of flushing channels for Lake Vancouver. And these are all things that have been studied and talked about and just bump along. Yeah, so I'd like to see some capital action now, not just to keep talking about it or letting other people study it, or paying consultants more money. So those are policy decisions I'm trying to push forward, and I was hoping we could all sit around a table with Camas and other entities and to discuss a way forward now.
This is helpful. If I can, if I can provide some insight as well. So Counselor Mevji, we understand this is a top priority for you. Camas knows that, the staff know that, but we, while we will continue to offer a cooperative agreement with the city of Camas, we can't force ourselves at their table. Maybe as a, of elected counselor, maybe it's worth having a conversation with the counselors over there to, to continue that. But unfortunately, I can't, we can't make ourselves go there. And then secondly, if I may, on Vancouver Lake, I know we've had conversations that we have talked to Senator Cleveland, and I have actually reached out to DNR because that, you know, again, while we want to partner with them, we need to make sure that the jurisdictions who have that authority are at the table and taking the lead, and that we, but we certainly want to have a, a partnership with them and help contribute to that solution as well.
So that gets back to the question I first posed. What leverage do we have on approving these stormwater permits for our municipalities? Is that an area of leverage? You have mentioned it to me before, and by the way, to the lawyers regarding the consent decree. I had asked a question a couple of weeks ago, I never got a response on it.
I don't believe that that discussion should happen during this council work session. But I don't know, Jeff and Justin, if you have. But I don't know, Jeff and Justin, if you have any thoughts on the stormwater approval process. And if not, maybe that's something we can look at on how that could contribute to what Councilor Medvedje is discussing today.
As far as the permits themselves that govern, you know, everything that we do, it's not so much I, if I'm interpreting what you're saying correctly, Counselor, it's not so much that we have a role in approving those permits. It's ecology that administers those. There is a pretty large effort going on right now across all of really Western Washington permatees to discuss how, what changes to the permit, all of the permatees would like to see in this next cycle. So those lines of communications actually locally and across Western Washington are largely pretty well open. There's, was a meeting recently about this ad hoc process that is essentially advising ecology on on you know, a way forward on adjusting the permit and how they administer it.
Thank you. We do have a seat at that table within Clean Water, so.
And then even more locally, our outreach efforts are can be tied in a lot of ways pretty, pretty well with all of the other municipalities around here. We we recently finished an effort that was largely focused on facility maintenance and educating contractors in this area and providing them resources on how to properly maintain facilities. That was a big collaborative effort with the city of Battleground, the city of Camas, the city of Vancouver, Leaf Ridge Field and us.
So you know, what came to my, go ahead. Did you have?
Go ahead, Counselor. Yep.
I was just going to say, when I heard Councilor Medvedje asking the question, immediately what came to my mind is jurisdiction, jurisdiction, jurisdiction. And, you know, we can only do so much, but it looks to me like our plate is pretty full. Because I had the same question that Councilor Bowerman brought up, and that is these miles of pipes that are old that we are going to have to address. That is our jurisdiction. We are going to have to do that. And so I I think that proper planning and looking forward and being sure that we are maintaining our assets or in, you know, improving them before they collapse or before they, you know, deteriorate to a point where we we have a much greater expense with the road caving in, et cetera. So while I I understand this whole lake issue, I also understand it's not our jurisdiction and we do want to work cooperatively. And I believe, you know, that our staff, you guys especially, are probably working hand in hand with them when you can and when they will work with us. So you know, it looks to me like we have our hands pretty full without adding to to it. If we can help, absolutely, we need to. But I think that we have lots of service to give to a lot of our unincorporated Clark County. So let's do what we can in our jurisdiction with what we must do. So thank you. That's, that's my little soapbox here for.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor, for those thoughts. That's.
Are there other questions or comments, the council?
I guess not. If if, and this is the conclusion of your presentation, thank you both very much for presenting this to us. It's always good to see this. Let's, I I think this 20 year plan, this looking forward 20 years is really important. It's going to be important. So let's just keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Yeah, thank you, Council. Appreciate your time today.
Thank you. With that, do we need another break or should we just go right into council time?